Good afternoon. In accordance with Sessions forty-five fifty-three and planning of the Planning Act nineteen ninety, as amended, this meeting of committee of adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The committee of adjustment consider applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning and that applies to property. Permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses and consent to serve a property to create new lots. My name is Yim Chen. I will chair the hearing today. And I also would like to introduce panel members today. From my far right is Mr. Peter Reed. And also from my left, from my right, another right is Mr. Dylan Reed. And I also would like to acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississauga Credit and La Sabe, the Chibwe and the Hola Sunni and the Wanda Peoples. And it's now home to many diverse First Nations indigenous peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearing are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make the submission in person and other will participate virtually by electronic means through weblogs. The meeting are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. And anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone and have the options of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called to speak. And those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will not be able, you will only be visible during your five-minute speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be restated as attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, committee of adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through weblogs are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelists controlled during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. How to receive a decision of the committee? People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card. And those participating virtually need to submit a written request for decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because the committee of adjustment and also the Toronto Local Appeal Board will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Board or, in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal committee adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies such as terms are defined in the Planning Act are permitted to appeal decision of the committee of adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Now, I will go through the hearing procedure. I will call each item in the order listed on agenda. When you are making your submission, where and submission is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with the presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. And then the committee may ask questions or take the matter into committee for decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address committee. And I will comment when you're reaching your five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept material during the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and make a presentation to the committee on the application. And then please note, the committee might not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee might decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revision is accurate and all those entitled to notice of the application inform of the changes. Those then individual either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we will invite the speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through weblogs. Committee member may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all the speakers are finished, the applicant or the agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. And this will mark the end of the discussion. Then the application will be then taken to committee for decision. And for this session, I'd like to know if there any declaration or conflict interest from panel members or staff?
See none.
See none. And I think we do have a list of deferred applications due to the Canada Post strike.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. So firstly, there's no minutes to adopt this afternoon and there's no files to be closed or withdrawn for this afternoon's agenda. With respect to deferral requests, we do have a list of applications where we will need a motion to defer the following applications from the afternoon agenda due to lack of notification resulting from the Canada Postal Strike. These are automatic deferrals due to lack of notice as required by the Planning Act. For anyone listening or wanting to participate with respect to these applications, these applications are rescheduled for the January eighth, twenty twenty-five hearing. Their information will be posted on the city's application information website and with signage posted on the properties. So the applications requiring a motion for automatic deferral due to lack of notification are Item twenty, Consent Application B, File Number B zero zero six four slash two four T E Y, municipal addresses of eleven forty-one Bluer Street West, nine eighty Duffin Street, and ninety Croatia Street. Item twenty-two, municipal address of three seventy-four Wynette Avenue, File Number A zero nine zero six slash two four T E Y. Item number twenty-five, municipal address of two oh six Lumsden Avenue, File Number A zero nine one seven slash two four T E Y. And item number twenty-six, municipal address of five forty-eight Dover Court Road, File Number A zero nine two slash two four T E Y.
Yeah, we need a motion to defer.
Thanks, Chair. For the reasons outlined, I move deferral of the applications.
I'll second adding that the deferred application should consider this possibly an opportunity to consult with neighbors and address any concerns of staff.
And through you, Madam Chair, we do also have another item that needs to be deferred for the same automatic deferral reason due to lack of notification from the Canada Postal Strike. That is item number nineteen. And its file number, or I'll start with municipal address, is two ninety-five Oakwood Avenue, File Number B zero zero five eight slash two four T E Y. And then minor variance applications associated for part one is File Number A zero seven nine six slash two four T E Y, as well as minor variance application for parts two, three, and four, File Number A zero seven nine seven slash two four T E Y. And we're doing this as a separate motion as I understand that members also have additional reasons for the deferral in addition to lack of notification.
Okay. So yeah, let's have a motion and then also list the other remarks or comments you have.
Sir, thanks, Chair. Yeah, just for this one, there are variances being requested related to bicycle parking, long-term bicycle parking, and bins, storage of garbage and recycling bins. I would request that the applicant consider this a little bit more fully and particularly showing it on the site plan where there is it going to go because I think that may end up altering some of the variances in regard to soft landscaping. But just to put some consideration to those two elements, the bike parking and the bins.
Exactly. May I explain the process? Because in our view, those are maybe basic.
Yeah, and if they choose not to, and if they choose not to improve those situations, then just to have reasons why.
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion and Mr. Dylan Reed seconded and all in favor to defer number nineteen. Thank you. All unanimous we approve.
And through you, Madam Chair. Lastly, with respect to deferrals, I just need to mention the delegated consent application. It is not before members as it is a delegated consent for decision by the Deputy Secretary Treasurer. However, just for the record, we're stating that it will be also deferred due to lack of notification resulting from the Canada Postal Strike. It's an automatic deferral due to lack of notice as required by the Planning Act. And this delegated consent application will be scheduled to the January eighth, twenty twenty-five hearing with its information posted on the city's application information center website and with signage posted on the property. That file is, it's also on the screen. It is municipal address three eighty-six to three ninety-four Simmington Avenue, File Number B zero zero five four slash two four T E Y. And it was item number one on the delegated consent agenda. Thank you.
I'm sorry, for the first set of deferrals, I don't think we actually did a vote. We seconded, but did we actually vote? We didn't actually vote?
I thought we did.
No. We, I seconded, but then we went straight to nineteen.
Yes, so we gave the reasons. Yeah, so let's go through the motion. Let's have a motion to defer the first list of the.
Yeah.
Sure. I'll move deferral of that large list that we spoke of before.
All right, so items twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Yeah, I'll second that motion for the reasons mentioned earlier.
And also, all in favor for the deferral?
Here.
All in favor, so we are good to go. There's just so many lists. Okay, so we are good to go. Item number twenty-one is thirty-nine Heath Street East. This is to obtain consent to serve the property into three undersized residential lots. And for part one, we'll have a frontage of six meters. Oh, I will not, and then there are part one, two, and three. And for B, they're going to construct a new four-story detached duplex with integral garage and a front porch with stairs and a rear ground floor patio. And they are seeking for four variances, five variances, sorry. And for twenty-one C, they also building a fourplex with similar set as a proposal. And they're seeking for five variances too. And on this file, we also received a minute from the September eighteenth public hearing and a copy of the survey. And we see September twelve and also another copy of survey site plan, four plan elevations, a couple of them from the agent and three protection plan from the agent. And we've received comments from transportation engineering and staff, report from urban forestry, and also advisory report from Metro Ling. Oh, not from Metro Ling, it's from the tree protection plan review division. We received one opposition from forty-three Heath Street East. That's all the material we received. So we are ready for the agent or applicant.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent here in person and no registered speakers for this item.
Okay, that's great. Welcome. And yeah, to start with, just give us your first and last name and your address for record.
Hi, my name is David Phillips and address is one seven nine Colin Avenue, Toronto, Ontario.
All right, so we have received all this material. We have reviewed them. Since you do not have any opposition or people wants to speak to this application, so I'm going to chat with my panel whether they want a presentation.
This is quite complex.
It's quite complex. Yeah, okay, I have the same feeling too. Yeah, just give us a five-minute presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Because we have a lot of bits and then we want to see, you know.
So I have two things to share. First, I'll cover off the issue that was the reason for the deferral and then I'll give an overview of the project more broadly. So at the September hearing, we had an objection from urban forestry over the location of the center driveway. There's three driveways and the part two driveway was close to Norway Maple. So since that hearing, I've worked with urban forestry to relocate the driveway and change the materials to be less intrusive on the tree. And they've not objecting to the revised plans that we came to. So a little bit about the project. I'm the nephew of the owners, Lynell and Jim Phillips, who are here with me today. This property has been in our family since the nineteen fifties. My great-grandfather purchased it when his family was expanding. Grandmother had her fourth child in the post-war baby boom. And sixty-five years later, we're in the same spot with a new baby boom. I have three young children under the age of four and my sister has her third arriving in March. So we're trying to build a family compound of sorts, which is the reason for the three lots. We can all have our own space and live next to each other and our aunt and uncle. So looking at what else has happened on the block, a lot has changed over sixty-five years. The neighbors have developed their properties. The lots have gotten narrower and narrower. Homes built higher and higher, closer together, and more units. And while these other developments have pushed the boundaries of density and height in the area, our application today seeks to stay within those existing bounds. And the variances we're asking for are intended to fit with the existing character within the limits of what is already commonplace on the block. And we understand the impact that a development like this has on neighbors, replacing one house with six units. So I just wanted to highlight a few of the design elements that we've included to be mindful of the impact on the neighbors. So if I might just bring up the first page of the comparable study. There's a rendering on the cover page. I don't know if that's, if we have that file there, the comparable study.
We give you a little bit more time.
Sure, yeah, no problem.
Since we have to bring up some more material for you.
It's in the previous.
It's in the deferred package.
I know there's a lot of files in there.
Wait till the staff can find it and bring it.
That's okay, I can just continue. So the three homes on the fourth floor, they all have a setback beyond the main front wall to reduce the visual, there it is, yeah, the visual impact from the street. And at the back, it's the same. The fourth level is stepped back from the rear wall. And at the back, also the third level is stepped back on the outer two units, the east and west unit. And that's to improve the visibility and shadows on the neighbor's properties. Also point out that thirty-nine C, the detached unit, the entire front wall of the home is set back further than the other two units for the benefit of the neighbor and to provide a more smooth transition back to forty-three, which is set back a bit further. I'll also note that the depth of thirty-nine C is not as deep as the existing neighbor's house, forty-three Heath. We proposed seventeen-meter building depth, which is less than is common in other applications in our area and less than the nineteen meters that is allowed by Rite currently for duplexes. And it's also less than the twenty meters that our neighbor on the other side, forty-five A Heath, has recently been approved for and built. So we hope that the shorter building depth will allow more light, allow more green space in the front and backyards, and be less intrusive on our neighbor. So thank you for listening. I hope this project will be a benefit to the neighborhood and the city. And my kids will be, this will be the fifth generation of our family living at this address.
You mean the longevity of property ownership. Okay, any questions? I do have one too, yeah.
Yeah, so looking at the plans, and so there's going to be like a separate unit that's on the ground floor in the basements, right?
That's right.
And how are people being expected to access that ground four unit? Is it, there's a side door into the garage?
So there's, all three have a back door and there's also a side door that goes into the garage space and into that unit.
And there's a back door as well.
There's a back door as well.
But like the space between the buildings to access that side door to reach the back is quite narrow.
Yeah, the space between them is point nine meters, which.
It's point nine meters.
My understanding is the minimum for the means of egress. And if we get into the building permit and they want it a little wider, we'll have to make it a little wider.
Right, right, okay. So it's point nine, okay, thank you. I guess another question that was brought up is something for, in terms of waste management, garbage bins, is the idea that those are going to be stored in the garages?
Be in the garage, potentially under the porch. I've seen some other places with under the porch, a little space there, but the garage would be the default.
Okay, thank you.
That's important, yeah. Yeah, it's a way, just brief question that you did mention that last time when you got deferred because you have some issues, you will work out with some tree protection with the city and then you change. And that's the only issue that they, in terms of your building, they do not have any comments?
There were questions about the various variances, but that was the only one that was considered to be unresolved.
Okay. And also, I actually, I do like the idea of not having three identical things because it will, this makes the streetscape is more interesting. But can you tell me why that you have semi-detached and detached? Is it the reason that I mentioned is just to create variety or?
It's a little bit of variety. The other alternative we thought was just three in a row, sort of like a townhouse in the middle and a semi on either end. And we thought that the neighbors might have more opposition to that. It would give us a little bit more building space. But there was one at sixty-seven Heath West that went through years and years of appeals. And that was ten years ago and it might be more acceptable now, but that was part of our rationale.
Yes, I see the point. One last question, I thought I have one question, but I have two. The one last question, do you have, do you have any neighbors that will have some concerns about overlook from your rear balconies and decks?
Nobody mentioned overlook. We went door to door and there was a few letters that had other concerns.
It's very common, they all, those property, in adjacent property, they have similar balcony setup, so they don't have any concerns.
To the east, it's a much lower house, so just look down on the roof. And to the west, they have a similar balcony. It's a three-story house with their balcony at the back has a big wall that you can't see through.
They don't have the so-called privacy screen on those.
They have a privacy screen at the back. It's a, like a black or pink wall that they have on their balcony. And the side window on the third floor, they bricked in.
I'm not, no one has raised their concern, so I'm not too sure the privacy issue will be here. But if we were going to consider it and then if we're going to suggest or impose a condition that you have some privacy screen on both sides of the balconies, would you be okay with that?
I'd prefer not to.
You'd like to open this more, I say, okay.
Yeah, if our neighbor were to redevelop and there'd be a privacy issue, I think we would mutually agree to put up something appropriate.
Yeah, that can wait. If there's real issue for both sides, this is like a privacy for both sides, right? Then you certainly do something about it. Okay, so that's all my question and then, yeah, please. Okay, we do not have any more question. We are ready to move into discussion. You have anything else you want to say before, address us?
No, if you want to, if you have any questions about a particular variance, feel free, but I don't have any other comments.
I just wanted to follow up on, I'm just looking at the plans, follow up on my earlier question. So I see you've got the point nine between the detached and thirty-nine B. For thirty-nine A, the access really is a shared space with the neighbor. Is that, because, I mean technically, they could put up a fence or something. Is that going to be okay? Like, are you confident that that will stay open enough to give like a reasonable amount of access?
I think we feel good about that. We have the back door and also the garage door at the front could be, there's ways to have a pedestrian door.
Right.
As part of that, so that's sort of the, it's various ways. The unit only requires, because there's no common stairwell, the unit only requires one entrance. Right now, we have two. So I think if we have some issues with that side door, there's enough other alternatives.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so all right, we are in committee now. Oh, I like the proposal. I think it's very, especially the part that I mentioned, it's not like you can have three rollhouse. But then this actually, especially the detached dwelling is sort of setback and then take on the different setbacks. I think that actually make the proposal much more in line with other houses on the street. They break it up into, yeah, into more, a smaller scale. That's my opinion. And then I think that is well use of the lot itself and also the location of these lots. It's a very desirable area, transit is great, everything is suitable for residential development.
Yeah, I agree with your points, Yim. I think there has been care, obviously, in the development of the design of these, both the location and the stepping down, particularly towards the rear. I think that's, and the staggering of the units. I think it's, I think it's very well done. And to the point of the consent, whether it fits, I think there's a lot of examples of these sizes of lots immediately adjacent and in the broader context. And I think it's just as an added benefit. I think the family getting to live together like this with kids growing up next to their cousins is great.
Yes.
Yeah, I think for me, the fact that it's kind of a family compound, it really helps explain why it's being divided to three lots, each quite narrow. And yeah, I agree that, I mean, it's well-designed. There's really a very spacious upstairs, single-family dwelling. And then there's also what I assume will be rental or, you know, for kids on the lower levels. So creates a lot of, a lot of living room without a lot of impact. Exactly, a lot of living room without a lot of impact. Obviously, I was a little concerned about access, but I think that that can be solved. So overall, I think this is. So overall, I think this is a, is a great proposal and a, a place that definitely is the right kind of area for that kind of intensification.
So, yeah, if we were going to have a motion, I just want to mention the urban forestry conditions. Each seem, each part seem to have a different condition. So twenty-one A have forest one, two, three. And twenty-one B has one and two. And twenty-one C has got forestry condition two. And twenty-one C has got condition two entry. That's what, all right.
And through the chair, sorry, staff, if you can just pull up the urban forestry report just so we also have it visually on the screen in terms of those conditions, just so there's no confusion between the part numbers and the file numbers and the A, B, C.
And the one other thing I failed to mention was I, I commend the applicant for resolving the urban forestry issue. I think that, like, that, that was the main reason for the deferral and so thanks to them for, for sorting it out and preserving that tree. I think that's great.
Yes, and, and that's important, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to move approval of the consent and the minor variance applications subject to all of the urban forestry conditions and engineering and construction services.
They're also construction. Are there standard consent conditions?
Through, yes, through you, Madam Chair, it's standard engineering construction services conditions. They did previously have a comment, it was just a comment but not a requirement, that the owner consider the possibility of designing the proposed driveways for premises number thirty-nine A and thirty-nine B Heath Street East together as a shared driveway. But that was just an advisory comment, not a condition, so it'd be standard consent conditions.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Dillon, we, second, and all in favor of all the conditions. unanimously approved. Thank you very much for coming. Okay. Are we, our num, item number twenty-three? Right, number twenty-two is being deferred and then number twenty-three is eleven bully question. This is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a new complete second-story addition and, which is partially can deliver and a partial third floor addition. And also to construct a one-story side-floor addition, a front porch canopy and a rear second-floor balcony. They're seeking two variances. And on, on this file, we receive a copy of survey site plan, four plan, and elevation arborist report and also a TRCA communication permit. We receive comments from the urban, the heritage, urban design and heritage. And we, we also, there's a staff report from within natural protection, feature protection and also from the TRCA.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent online and no registered speakers for this item.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Yes, give us your first and last name and your address to start with. Thank you, yeah.
Absolutely. My name is Addison Milton Price. I'm a planner at Design Plan Services located at eighty-seven Skyway Ave, here on behalf of the owners.
Yes, you do not have any opposition for, to your application, so I'm going to see what our panel require presentation from you or not. Maybe they have questions, no? Yes, so we have received all this material and we have reviewed all the materials. So do you have anything particularly you want to address the panel before we move into discussion?
Uh, no, I, I believe that it's quite a straightforward application. If there's any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them, however.
They don't have any questions, so now we are in committee. Oh, all right, no, just wait. We, we do have a question for you, yeah.
Thanks, Chair. To the applicant, there's, in terms of the side yard setback at point five-four meters, I think, that's, as far as I understand it, that's just one small portion of the building. Would you be fine if we tied, if we were to approve this application to tie it to site plan approval to be substantially in accordance with the site plan? Sorry, not site plan approval, tie it to the site plan, just to, to physically line out that, that dimension and where that setback is?
Through you, Madam Chair, I, I have no issue with a condition tying it to plans. You're correct, it is just a, a small portion that requires the zero-point-five-four side yard setback variance. So I think it's appropriate to tie it to plans here.
Great.
Thank you, yeah, that's a good, yeah. So now we are in committee. And I think this is a way straightforward thing and then I think tying to site plan is good.
Yeah, I agree.
So do we have a motion or you want to discuss this?
I asked a question, so I'll make the motion. Yeah, I think this is a reasonable application. It's mostly within the existing footprint. And I think the, I think the variances are minor to get to this point. So I, I move approval of the application with the condition that be tied to the site plan.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll second, just noting that the, yeah, the, the side yard setback is just a small extension of an existing part that sticks out, so I, I think it's really, really minor. So I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor with that tied to the site plan? Yeah, approved unanimously, thank you. Okay, now, item number twenty-four, which is forty-eight Alcina Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing second and third story addition. And they're seeking two variances. On this file, we receive a survey, site plan, floor plan elevations, two photographs of the property and also comparable applications from the agent. And we have a correspondent from support, this is support from thirty-seven Helena Avenue and, and also eight letters in support from Alcina Avenue and also from fifty-one Helena Avenue, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent on the line and no registered speakers for this item.
Charles, you have been muted.
Hi, yes, my name is Charles Chan Yai. I'm at twenty Smithwood Drive in Etobicoke, from Ontario Permancing, representing my clients of forty-eight Alcina.
Thank you. You, you do not have any opposition, in fact, you require a few people to support you. So we have received all your material and reviewed it. I see whether our panel wants to have a presentation from you, no?
Okay.
Do you have any questions? Okay, they, they don't have any questions either. So do you have anything you want to address the panel before we move in for a decision?
Um, no, if there's no questions about the application, you know, with everything that we've presented with the documents we uploaded, like, it's, it's, it'll follow the community how it's been growing right now.
Okay, thank you. So now we are in committee. Okay, Dillon, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably my turn to make a motion on. Yeah, this is, I mean, this is, first of all, I, I, I am very pleased to see that the applicants have clearly consulted with their neighbors and got their feet, their support. I think that's really important and that makes a big difference. It's a fairly substantial expansion, but the actual variances aren't that significant. So we're creating a lot of new living space, really in a thoughtful way that will fit nicely in the neighborhood. So I move that we approve, approve these variances. I, I don't think there's any conditions.
Yes, that's, I would second. Peter second that motion, all in favor and approved unanimously. Thank you very much, it's approved.
Thank you, committee members.
Yes. So are we, no, twenty-five is being deferred. And then now we are on item number twenty-six is four eight, four, I'm sorry, is five four eight.
Through you, Madam Chair, that was deferred as well. We're actually on to our last item of the agenda, which is item twenty-seven.
We have item twenty-seven?
Thirty-three Prest Avenue.
Oh, sorry, okay, I, 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 my, my notes stopped at twenty-six. Okay. All right, sorry, the last, the last one is item number twenty-seven, thirty-three Prest Avenue, is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear second-story addition. And it's to enclose, this is to enclose the existing second-story deck for habitable space. They're seeking one variance. And on this file, we also receive a copy of survey site plan, four plans and elevation, six photographs of the property and a couple letters from the agent, decision affecting the property and presentation material from the agent. We also receive comment from MetroLink and we receive support from seventy-four Ivy Avenue and also twenty-three Prest Avenue, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the agent on the line and no registered speakers for this item.
Good afternoon, committee. My name is Luca Penzo of one-twenty-eight Arundel Avenue. I'm the applicant and agent representing the owners at thirty-three Prest.
We have no one here to oppose or want to speak to this item, so I'm going to see whether we require a presentation from you. Do you have any questions? Okay, we have no questions either. We have received all your materials and we have reviewed them. Do you have anything you, any issue or any, any, any particular thing you want to address the panel before we move into discussion?
No, I think it's a straightforward application for a modest second-level addition, so I'm just happy to answer any questions if the committee members have any questions for me.
Okay, we, I don't, they don't seem to have any, so we are now in committee here.
I'm happy to move a motion for this. I, it's, it's a very simple application. They're just enclosing a, a rear porch on the second floor that's already roofed. So I think the impact of doing so is, is going to be extremely minor. And, and yeah, there's just the one variance that's required to, to get there. I have no concerns about this, so I move approval without condition.
They, they seem to have, oh, no, they don't have forestry condition.
Through the chair, there's just the MetroLink's advisory condition, which is a warning clause. So it's up to members if you wish to impose that or not.
No.
I'd rather not include it.
So, so the motion is to approve with no condition. And Mr. Dillon, we'd second and all in favor of the approval, unanimously approved. Thank you so much. And that conclude our today's hearing at two forty-six.
Hey, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great day. Thank you, take care.